All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Regular Meeting here at City Hall, Council Chamber, 6:00 PM, January 27, 2025. We'll call the meeting to order at this time. We've got a certification of a quorum. I'd like to... Everyone join us in the pledge allegiance and dedication. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, and God, one and invisible. Councilman Culbry?
Sorry, his. Good evening, Father. We welcome you in this place. Father, we honor and glorify and hold you up as King of kings and Lord of lords. Father, we thank you for all the blessings of life that you richly bless us with. We thank you for health, strength, and for life itself. Father, this evening, we want to just lift up our Assistant Fire Chief Bill Morris in his health and his family, that you would just give them peace and assurance that you're there, that you do see. Father, we know that even though we live here on this earth and we're small people in a big world, and we're a small town in a big country, in a big world, Father, we know that you are looking down this evening and you see us. And you said that if we get together and we are in one accord, two or three, that you would be in our midst. And so, we welcome that. And we remind you of that promise, and we ask you that you be with us here this evening. Fathers, we make decisions for our city, for the prosperity, for the future of it. I just ask that you would just hold close to our city managers and our mayor and all of the people that are involved in this city, Father, and also us as councilmen, Father, that we would understand that wisdom comes from above and not from within. So, this evening, as we do this, Father, may each person that wants to speak, that they would do it calmly, and that you would just bless our meeting this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to go item number four of public hearing. Item number one, SUP 2025-01, midnight tenders, dash, at 2:20 Main. An application by Jesse Amedondo, tenant, for special use permit to operate an auto window tenant shop in a structure located at approximately 0.0930 acres of El Campo, Block 9, Lot 10. General location, 220 Main, El Campo, Texas, 77437. So, item number two. Oh. That meeting was open, now I'm closing it. I mean, that public hearing. Now, I'm going to open item number two, Z 2025-01. An application by the City of El Campo for a change in zoning from general commercial district C2 to central business district CBD on approximately 0.6715 acres of Murford Block 45A, 45C, 45B, 46B. General location, zero, West Montserrat, El Campo, Texas, 77437. 309 West Montserrat, El Campo, Texas, 77437. 303 West Montserrat, El Campo, 77437. At that time, this public hearing is closed. All right, moving into public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council in compliance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act. The City Council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or reciting existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. This time, we've got one. Mr. John Healy.
Hello. I just want to thank city manager and the police department. I had a bike stolen about four days ago on Hillgy Street. It's worth $800. I didn't really want to permanently lose it, and the police department got it back for me yesterday. So, I'm very happy and appreciative of their efforts to get it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we're going to move on to item number six, consent agenda. Approval of City Council Regular Meeting on January 13, 2025, 6:00 PM, minutes. And then, number two is an ordinance that we read, 2025-03, authorizing and calling general city election for four district council members positions on May 3, 2025. Ordenanza 2025-03, que autoriza y convoca una elección municipal general para cuatro puestos de miembros del consejo de distrito el 3 de mayo 2025. It's a good thing you were mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number seven. Items for individual consideration. Number one, ordinance 2025-01, authorizing a special use permit for the purpose of operating a auto window tent shop in a structure located at the here and after described tracks or parcels of land lying and being situated within the city limits of El Campo, City of El Campo, Wharton, Texas, and described as follow. Approximately 0.0930 acres of El Campo, Block 9, Lot 10. General location, 220 Main, El Campo, Texas, 77437.
All right, good evening, y'all. I'm going to do a really brief presentation today because I'm feeling a little nauseous, and I don't know how long I can stay up here with y'all. So, I'm going to go through the items that are in here and then allow you guys to go straight to questions. For your SUP, you can see the location here, adjacent to City Hall at Hillgy and Main Street. You have your residential and commercial properties around that location. This is for midnight tenders. It has to go through SUP because the way it falls in our land use matrix, it's an auto-related type of business, so it has to go through this. So, even though it doesn't seem like it's a tire shop or something like that, we still have to go through this process. So, these are the details that are in your staff report, that are included in your packet, and it is eligible for approval, and it's recommended for approval by your planning and zoning commission. They did include two pretty routine conditions that the applicant is aware of and does agree to. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mayor, I move, we approve the tent, the whatever number, put the number back up there, Kegley, please.
SUP 2025.
SUP 2025-01.
Ordinance 2025-01.
Ordinance 25, 2025-01.
Second.
We got a motion, a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend that motion to say that we approved this recommendation or this ordinance with the condition that there be no placement of anything outside the building at any time other than approved signage, and that no work be performed outside the building.
Okay, we got a...
You think you'll have to ask Mr. Hodges to accept that amendment to the motion?
He needs a second for that.
I'd like to speak to the... Can we speak to the... Ask him if he can do it outside?
Hang on just a second. We had a motion and a second.
The amended motion needs a second.
We need to amend... The amended motion needs a second before we go into discussion. Regret if I'm wrong.
You are. He has to accept the amendment to his motion.
Okay.
Or you have to take a vote on the motion that's on the floor, one way or the other. But he can accept Mr. Hancock's amendment, but you can discuss it.
I really don't want to accept it till I discuss it.
You can.
Okay. I'd like to speak to the gentleman, if he's here.
I can answer.
You can answer that?
Yes.
Can he do the work? Can he do all the work inside?
Yes, the applicant is going to do all the work inside. In the staff report, there's a picture of the space. You can see that all of it would be conducted inside. So, we've already had the discussion about working outside, and that's not...
Then I accept the amendment.
Thank you. Second with the amendment.
Sure. Okay. So, we got Mr. Hancock that amended the motion, the original motion by Mr. Hodges, and we've got a motion and a second for the amended motion. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
You've got the two conditions.
That was to perform all work indoors, and no signage. Other than what's approved, nothing outdoors.
They're in violation the next day.
Item number two.
We have a discussion about that.
Ordinance 2025-02, rezoning the general commission, commercial district C2 to central business district. The here and after described tracks of parcels of land lying and being situated within the city of El Campo, Wharton County, Texas, and described as follows, approximately 0.6715 acres of Murford Block 25A, 25C, 45A, 45C, 45B, 46B. General location, zero, Montserrat, El Campo, Texas, 77437. Actual address is 309 West Montserrat, El Campo, 303 West Montserrat, El Campo.
Okay, so this request has a couple of blocks that are associated with it. This is a portion of the Montserrat block. You'll see, so the top right corner is an open space where one of the original water well sites was for the founding of the city. Past that is the hair salon and then into your downtown area. The reason this request has come up is that the very teeny tiny piece at the bottom of that block, that there was a person seeking an applicant, application for variance to build to the footprint, which is normal for that district down there, but C2 does not allow that. And then additionally, it doesn't allow the type of use that they were looking to do, which is a downstairs shop and an upstairs residence, which is what the planning and zoning is looking to start finding more of for their downtown area. And so, we, in discussion with the applicant, decided to push this through as a rezone presented by the city. Also, because if you notice, this is a solid block, and in your rezoning or in your zoning changes that you're going to be making with your comprehensive plan update, we'll be looking at blocks like this. And this is a block that would be rezoned to central business district at that point. So, we're just looking to do this particular set of parcels earlier.
So, which spot are we talking about in particular?
It's the one outlined in blue. So, that the bigger section has a couple tenants. It's got a tenting shop, it's got a cabinet shop. The one in the middle is the old Jay's Last Call bar, and then the one at the end is a vacant lot. So, it's all three of those lots would be zoned to central business district if approved. And then, these are the properties that are around it. You can see in the images here that everything is already built to the street. There is no setbacks in this particular section of this block. It's very similar to your downtown area. Everything is zero lot line essentially. And let's see, I mentioned all of that. It does not affect the existing businesses that are in the other property, and we've been in communication with that property owner, and her tenants are not affected, and they're fine with this decision if it is approved. And it is eligible for approval and recommended for approval by your planning and zoning commission. Any questions?
Anyone like to make a motion? On ordinance 2025-02.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-02.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second? Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item number three, Resolution R 2025-06, expressing support for the redevelopment of Old Crest South Apartments, authorizing conditional funding commitment for the project, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements related to the said project.
These are the apartments located on the corner of West Norris and the Loop. Tim Smith is in the audience to answer any questions you may have about the $65,000 per unit improvements he's, could possibly make if they are awarded this very competitive funding. I don't know if I'm failing to add something to him.
No, that's great. What we're doing is, I'm Tim Smith, it's Hope Development Services. I'm working with the developer, the current owner and developer, to secure some funding from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for tax credits that'll be sold, banks, insurance companies, et cetera. In doing so, we'll raise equity to do a major substantial renovation on these apartment complexes. Currently funded by USDA, we'll refinance the USDA loan and use this funding source to do substantial rehabilitation, pretty much make them like new.
Got a question, are we adding more apartments or just rehabbing?
Just rehab.
Does the city get taxed off of that at all?
Yeah, so there's no change in the tax structure.
How do you define city's formal support?
A resolution that says we support the application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for this money.
Have we seen the application?
No, we haven't made it yet. This, this, this resolution would go in our application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
And there is a $250 commitment that could be in the form of fee waiver, or that's probably how we, if council approves this, how we would handle that.
Yeah, as you said earlier, this funding source is very competitive, so we get points for resolution support from the city council, and we get a point for a commitment of funds for, you know, minimum of $250 from the city. That's just the way the state says, oh, you do support this. So, that's all we're looking for. Nothing, it's just the minimus.
When, when you... If this would pass, y'all would start remodeling or whatever y'all going to do to the facilities there, what would happen to the tenants that are in there?
What they, what they would do is they would go through a relocation plan with the tenant. They probably would, a unit this small, is they probably start, they may do a couple of lease down units and just kind of rotate, you know, finish doing a building at a time. A lot of times, they just do it around the tenants because you're just, you're talking, you're going in, you know, putting cabinets in. This isn't necessarily stripping to the studs and making it livable. This is new roofs, ACs, new cabinetry, new appliances, dealing with any utility repairs, any exterior deferred maintenance.
They're not tearing out bathrooms or anything like that?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Will this cause our rents to go up?
Not to the tenants, no. There may be an increased rent, but that would just be part of the refinancing plan with USDA, and they would pay the difference.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion on Resolution R 2025-06?
Mayor, I move, we approve that resolution.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second, on the floor, to approve Resolution R 2025-06.
Have a question, Mayor?
Question?
Courtney, just to confirm, I mean, it's, I'm not against this, it's just generally vague, but there is a recommendation, you guys are good with it. Y'all see stuff, everything's...
Yes.
No other questions, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of a motion? Raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Resolution R 2025-07, declaring soil filled property as surplus and authorizing the mayor or designee to execute sale or disposal of said property.
At the last meeting, you approved the inventory control plan, and that stated that anything over $50,000 will come through council for approval of sale. So, that is why we are here asking for your approval on this resolution that was drafted by our attorney for the spoil fill over at the old Trest Polacias project. And the reason you're seeing this so late is because we had to wait on a charter amendment and then wait on a policy to be adopted. And so, we're getting this out as quickly as we can so we can see how much we can get as we sell this dirt.
This is at the old detention, the new detention pond.
And there will be more when we finish the second part of this project.
Okay.
So, that's part of the reason we're in front of you tonight.
The money will just go back in the fund balance?
The money would go back into the fund balance, that's correct.
Potential revenue is total revenue, annual revenue?
Total revenue.
Over a course of how long?
Till the dirt's gone. We don't know how long that will take. Kevin, do you know who might be interested in this dirt?
Any local aggregate hauler that has a dirt hauling business, and with the amount of projects coming up real close to us, Pierce, Wharton, projects and all that, they will require quite a bit of material.
Highway dirt.
They will monitor how much they...
We will. We have actually a camera that will set up. Once they come in, we'll be able to...
Tell how much they're getting?
Yes, because it's high enough to see what's in the trucks. And it's an estimate, it's not weighed or...
Well done. Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve Resolution R 2025-07.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor to approve? Motion passes.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number five, purchase two marked, marked, two marked police units in an amount not to exceed $143,500.
Kind of afraid, she said she was going to throw up, so I'll watch what I hear.
She's still here.
She's okay, okay, good. The... I mentioned this during the budget process that we, that I'd probably be coming back to you asking for some units. These are marked units. The issue that we're having right now is I have two units that are older units that we've been spending a lot of money on. They had a lot of downtime, and I think it's a good time to get them out of service and to replace those units. So, these won't be in addition to the fleet. It's to replace two vehicles that have over 80,000 miles. One of them in particular, we only use it at limited service now because we've put in about, in the last fiscal year, over 11,000 in repairs, and it still breaks down a lot. So, we've, we've not had good luck with Dodge products, say.
I was going to ask you if that was a Tahoe.
No, it's, they're both Durangos. And then, we've had, we've had issues. And again, I don't want Dodge to get mad at me, but it's just what I've seen since I've been here, we've had a lot of trouble with them. So, we went out and looked, and we found these are Ford Explorers. They are police package. We, we like the Tahos, but the problem you have with Tahos is that you can order one, and you may get it, we don't know when. And we, we, again, this vendor that we're going through is a tips approved vendor. So, they are the ones we used with the last purchase, and they were excellent. These vehicles, we are told they have them in stock on the lot. So, the minute y'all approve it, I can get this done and sent over because the same people who we buy it from also outfit it. So, it's a one-shop type deal, and they can go ahead and start outfitting it. And the added benefit too, if we buy these now, we are currently, in fact, this week, the body worn cameras that y'all approved are getting put in, the stage of training and getting them put in. We can go ahead and ship that up there, and they can do all that at one time instead of a double process if we wait longer and have the old, putting these new units in there and then get other new units on the body worn camera. So, we save some on that also. The price, I looked back in 2022, y'all bought a Tahoe, and it was 75,000 each. So, I think the price is pretty good here per unit, and the total cost at 143,500. I'll be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Might I add, the reason that you're seeing this in front of you instead of waiting till the budget cycle is because of the maintenance issues you're having with your existing fleet, as well as the fact that you have savings within your budget to cover this cost. These were not budgeted, they were not part of the budget process. And that is because we were afraid of this tax increase. And so, we stripped the budget of equipment, and he would have had to wait until the next budget cycle, which would have been October, but he has the savings to pay for this equipment right now.
Correct.
Mayor, I move to purchase two marked police units in an amount not to exceed $143,500.
Second motion.
We had a motion, a second, on the floor, to purchase two marked police units in an amount not to exceed $143,500. All in favor?
Thank y'all very much.
Motion passes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's get into reports.
All right, moving into reports. Number one, quarterly citizen board and commission reports.
Yeah. Included in your packet are the board commission reports that we've been providing quarterly. If you have any questions and you don't think of them tonight, we will be happy to answer them. If you just shoot us an email or call us.
All right. Item number two, fiscal year '25 first quarter reports, investment, departmental, financial, and capital projects.
Yeah, and we've added in the capital projects as a quarterly update so you can see where we are on your $35 million in capital projects. Also, worth noting again that these budget reports come straight out of your general ledger. So, that means we cannot alter them, and you're seeing every line item in there. If you have any questions, Brittany or myself can answer your questions regarding the financials and the capital, as well as departmental reports. Our department heads are in the audience, or can be reached after this meeting.
Any discussion on that? Not, we'll move into item number nine. We'll be going into closed executive session at this time.
I have asked Ms. Brown to stay in first of the closed session. Okay.
Okay.